There are actually alternative solutions. There's-
Two-way bike lane? That's really gonna confuse people.
There are things called the cycle tracks that are, you know, being used in other cities. As a matter of fact, the closest city to us that has one is St. Petersburg. In their downtown, they have a two-way cycle track on one of the streets that carries essentially the Pinellas Trail that links the-
I've seen their signage.
Yes.
But I just think with our driving issues on those two roads, bicycles going in the opposite direction is really gonna-
Confuse people.
Yes. It's not gonna be conducive to-
So you would only be able to do it from Berry to 41?
Yes, of course, from 41 southbound out to the city limits at Cooper Street. That's FDAT's control and we certainly wouldn't be proposing to-
So you really just got that little spot. I mean, a lot of people use those parking lanes as, you know, turn lanes now, so.
Yeah.
I think we should get back to our paving program.
Isn't this something we could always come back to?
Yes.
Irrespective of the paving issues. With regard to the paving issues, I'm disappointed we couldn't include it in the capital improvements and take the bad news all in one shot, but I think it's something we need to table. Thanks staff for a wonderful report and let it resurface again when we start to look at the budget.
Right.
And really, the proposal was bump it to six, sixteen, six one seven five hundred, which we could throw that in the budget as a planning number at least to just look about inching it up somewhat.
I really think we need to take a look at our roads. It's our roads that are the most visible thing, among the most visible things in our community. And we have, and I think I heard Mark say, you know, "It's the squeaky wheel that'll get their roads paved." I mean, if enough people on a road are complaining about their roads, Public Works is probably gonna look at that one and bump another one down the road. I mean, down the pike, down the road, whatever.
Right.
It's, so, I think we really do need to take a look at what we need to do in terms of catching up to make sure all of our roads are in good order. And I had suggested before that we look at it perhaps as a special assessment-type program and think about our roads. I mean, I think they're critical to our community.
I think we need, I mean, I just am waiting for the budget to all come together.
Any other comments?
Just a question, is it possible to have something on the, I know this report is actually up on the city's website, but is it possible to have under Public Works someplace where people can go look at their road and where it stands, kind of thing? Because I know some people have asked me, like, "When is my road gonna get repaved?" You know, this is not every day, but I mean, people do ask about it.
Well, we really don't have anything that shows when your road's gonna get paved. What we have is a map showing when it was last paved.
I think that's just-
And they're so responsive, yeah. I mean, all they have to do is call Public Works and they're so responsive. Every request, I mean, that, it's almost immediate. But, yeah, I mean-
A map is great.
If constituents care about their roads, they can contact Public Works and they'll come out. Because we had, at the town hall meeting we had a couple of years ago, there were a couple of people that wanted their roads surveyed, and they went out and they checked the condition and they reported back to the person. And if it's on the list, they'll certainly provide them what year it's in the funding stream. And a lot of it has to do with utility projects as well, because like the downtown flooding, we couldn't do Marion and Olympia because of the work that they're doing, so they take all of that into consideration. I mean, I wouldn't be in favor of like expanding some kind of website where you could go check your road, I mean-
I think if there's a map-
Yeah, the map is fine.
We have the map showing when it was last paved and we have a five-year capital improvements program-
With the names of the streets.
Five-year paving program-
Yes.
With the streets that we're projecting to be paved.
That's fine.
Understanding that those changes as we get closer to the fifth year.
And it's been on the, in there, it's just maybe in a more visible place, you're saying?
As long as it's up there, that's fine.
Could you put that in the weekly report so we can make sure, we can highlight it and get people into the website?
Great report, Mark.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
It's worse than I thought.
Okay, next, we have park rental fees.
It's actually better than I thought.
Are you gonna kick this off, or do you want me to?
Want me to?
Yeah, go ahead.
We were asked to come back with a proposal to see if council wanted to reduce, provide discounts for park rentals during the May through September, October timeframe. You have in the information what we generate from park rentals. We did a survey of other communities. We are competitive with what our current fee structure is. If you wanna do a discount or whatever during May through September or October, you can try it, see what happens, but we are competitive.
I like the idea. I mean, I would suggest it could be just for new events, not existing events that have already been programmed, but for any new event from May through October.
But is that fair then? Would that be fair to those that have already scheduled something? Oh, just because we're not new, it's like going to, you know, getting your channels changed or something like that. You go to a new place and find that, you know, other customers are getting reductions and I'm an ongoing customer for years and years.
Well, part of the issue too is that they've already pre-selected their dates. So they're already on, they have an option to renew their event, correct? They have an option of holding that for the whole year ahead.
Lisa Hannan, zoning coordinator, for the record, yes. Annual events can book five years out. We have annual events that book five years out in the parks.
In that timeframe? In that particular timeframe that we're discussing now?
Anytime.
Oh, the May, they can do it anytime, year-round, but the May through September, October is when we usually don't have very many events. But a lot of the events, just keep in mind, a lot of the events, if it's a 501(c)(3), such as the Hibiscus Festival, they're only paying a hundred dollars a day for the park rental. We need to keep that in mind when you go to look at reduction in the fees, because we changed the nonprofit as a 501(c)(3) only, not a (c)(6). They have a different nonprofit rate, which is listed in here, but the 501(c)(3)'s only pay a hundred dollars a day for the park rental.
For both parks, Gilchrist or Lashley?
Yes, any park.
Do you get a lot of requests to lower the fees?
Not really, not really. I mean, you do have a few new every now and then, but you'll have the Kiwanis who has, they have their little concert in the parks. They're only there for like four hours. They pay the hourly rate because at twenty dollars an hour is cheaper than a full hundred dollars for the day, and they're a 501(c)(3).
Is it likely that this would produce any additional revenue for the city, in your opinion?
My opinion, no. We don't get a lot of events in the summer. The Hibiscus Festival in May is one of your last events for the summer in a park, in the park.
Well, other than the Fourth of July.
Well, right.
I think it's fine.
Yeah, I don't think there's any need to change it.
Okay. Okay, next, we have recommendations from city officers. First, we will go to Howard.
Can we do two before one? I think two will be very quick. One won't. This item is a recommendation that council consider letters of support for the county sewer project, the airport expansion, and the water authority repair that are currently funded in the state budget. And if we sent letters of support for our local projects so that the governor wouldn't veto.
Yes.
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 We'll prepare letters for you.
Okay.
That's what that is. Now-
Maybe we also ask for a reciprocal letter from them for our project?
I have been asked, I asked from the board of county commissioners and I've asked the airport authority-
And they've already really provided us letters before.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Airport has indicated that they would send one.
Okay, so we will prepare some letters. The executive assistant, paralegal probably already hasn't written. Now, the RO plant. This is on the agenda because of the reception that four of you got at the last governing board meeting. So, the suggestion here is, there are thirteen governing board members. With the exception of one, there's twelve other members that you may want to contact You know, each take a couple. And reach out to them, see if they wanna discuss our grant application in any further detail or not, because we have a May governing board meeting coming up and that's, our project is not on that agenda, but we could again go under public input if we wanted to. And then the June meeting is when the budget, the Swiftmud budget actually gets approved.
Did you get any response?
I was gonna say, no, I have not, and I just looked to see. I did write a letter to Mike Moran and I have gotten no response from him. And I didn't wanna make a call until after our meeting today when we discussed.
I took the liberty of printing off copies of the pictures of the individuals, because what I thought we might do is I try to identify the people that were asking questions at the last meeting, but maybe as you all look at them, maybe we could identify those particular individuals that we may have more of an opportunity to have an impact on them. So if we could put these on the Elmer.
And should we go ahead and do this? I would think that we may wanna go back and take a look at the minutes of the previous meeting so that we can have an understanding of the positions that the various people that we may be speaking to, where they were coming from.
That's a good idea.
Absolutely.
We can do that.
Yeah, I was unable to attend, so.
Wendy Griffin, the woman, she did ask a couple of questions, and again, the rest of you kind of reviewed this, if you, and I was trying to remember specifically, but she was concerned, I believe, about-
The quality.
The quality.
The TDS.
The TDS that she was concerned about in terms of that. The former chair, Todd Pressman, was, again, from Pinellas, and he was the supporter for the separate and independent RO plant from the first session. And he also asked another question with regards to this, and I think it had some relationship to why the connection with the Phase One pipeline. I'm not, I don't totally remember, so if you guys remember, that would be helpful.
Do you wanna, I mean, should we divvy it up right now, or?
If we take Carlos Baruff-
Take him off.
Leave Michael Moran to Kim, there are ten remaining, we could take two.
Yeah, I'll take Beswick, 'cause I've tried to make contact with him through some mutual friends, and I'll take Pressman if you want me to.
Why are we leaving Carlos Baruffa? Just because, I mean, I know he's totally against it, but-
I think primarily because he's dug his heels in and I don't see, I don't personally see any movement from him.
Right, right.
He stated it very clearly, and he's really been, he's really limited the conversation to, I mean, he really pretty much caught Todd Pressman off-
Yes.
-in conversation when we were there, so.
And Wendy.
They pretty much all sit there.
Yeah, and the rest of the staff. I mean, he basically cut everyone off who was speaking, so. I mean, I felt, I mean, just to give you an opinion, I don't know how the rest of you felt, but it was almost like the meeting we all went to, he gave us all the time, and remember him saying, "Oh, no, get back up there. I don't want anybody to feel like they didn't get their time to speak." And it was really kind of the opposite, I felt, last time. I mean, he let you speak, you know, he did let you speak, but then when anyone was trying to ask you questions, he just cut them off, whether it was the staff, his fellow, you know, board members. So I was trying to reach out to Michael Moran to say, "You're our guy."
And you had a good letter.
Yes.
Just to remind you, Rachel, Brian Beswick did not show up for either of those meetings.
Okay.
So just to, so he hasn't heard our pitch.
I will contact him and Todd Pressman.
I mean, we are, are we truly, I mean, and I know I've asked Howard, and that we are the only city, county, area that does not meet the DEP standards?
The TDS.
TDS.
I think we're the only ones left.
Yes. We're one of the-
Well, if you like this idea, you wanna pick out some more, so we can get this accomplished.
Sure, I'll take Polk and Griffin, if that's okay.
Okay.
Well, which ones?
Polk and Griffin.
Is somebody with the last name Polk?
Or-
Oh, I'm sorry, George Mann from Polk County.
Well, there are two from Polk County. Do you wanna take both of them from Polk County? Because they might-
No, I'd prefer to get a different flavor if I could, speaking to two different counties.
Now, the vice chair, Michael Bab, hasn't really spoken up at all. Neither has the secretary, Randall, is it Maggard? M-A-G-G-A-R-D? So neither of them have really said anything, and they are officers of the, I'll take both of them.
Okay, you take both of them.
Okay.
So we have Adams, Pinellas-
No, Pinell-
Yeah, I can-
Pressman's already taken.
Yeah, I took Pressman.
I'll take Adams then.
Okay.
Adams and-
You wanna take one more?
Yeah.
Bronson.
Sure. I'll take Adams, I mean, I'll take whoever's left, it doesn't matter.
Now, Paul Senft, he was one that wants to maintain the regionalization as well. He kind of, I think, digging in with the chairman. So he is the former chair from Polk.
Oh, okay.
So-
Todd Pressman.
Who doesn't have two?
I don't.
You have Moran and Dunbar?
I thought you'd take Dunbar. I'll take-
No, I took Adams and Bronson.
Okay, I'll take Dunbar.
And somebody needs Wendy Griffin.
I have Griffin.
Oh, you do? Okay.
And who has Paul Senft? S-E-N-F-T. Can you see one have him?
Do we miss him?
Does it need to be all of us, or Howard, you want, you wanna?
We could, I mean, I'll take three, I'm not sure.
Okay.
It'd be better if the council, elected officials reach out. I mean, I can do it, but I'm-
No, I don't mind talking to three people.
Okay. Tomorrow I have a meeting with county administrator and the water authority executive director at the county building. We've urged the county to put it on an agenda to support the Phase One project, so I'll learn more tomorrow as to how they're planned to-
When is the May meeting? I don't think I have that on my calendar.
I think it's the thirteenth.
The governing board?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought that was like the twentieth or something.
Do you think one of us should be there tomorrow at that meeting?
Which meeting?
With Pat and Ray.
The staff.
Okay. Okay.
They invited me. They're meeting and they just invited me.
Okay. That sounds fine.
Other things that we should be doing with regards to this? I mean, in terms of a strategy for the next May meeting then?
Well, the May meeting, we're not on the Swiftmud agenda.
So we're just showing up again?
If that's what we wanna do. Or do we just wanna focus on June?
I think we should probably just focus on June. We don't wanna, you know-
I think you'll learn more when you have your individual contacts.
Yes.
And then we can talk about it again at the next council.
Yeah, we have a meeting before their May meeting.
And I talked with, I talked with Commissioner Truex yesterday about the, or Monday, about the interconnect, Phase One.
You need to be careful.
Because it's, I assume that Commissioner Deitch is in the other room.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, let's save that until after.
I'll save that then.
All right, so we each have our members that we're gonna contact before the next council meeting, and then we'll have this discussion about strategy for the May governing board meeting. But at this point, full court press, as far as I'm concerned, because-
Yes, absolutely.
We have nothing to lose.
And our message, our message to them would include, we understand the desire for regionalization through the interconnect. However, we can stand alone, we need to stand alone at this point in time so that we can provide quality water to our residents. And then we can go through all those checklists of rationale that we have presented at the meeting and that we put in our letter.
Yes.
And we can still work on the other, but it's just-
On what other?
The interconnect.
Oh, yes.
We can still work on that.
Well, you know, we're all supportive. Talking to the commissioners about it, but we don't really have anything to-
It's not our project.
It's not our project, and we don't, and, you know, they-
It's not our project, but we support it.
Absolutely.
Okay?
All right, now with the commissioners, are we, oh, I guess I can't, can I say anything with regards to that?
If it's general, you can.
Well, can I just interject? You can talk about that. It's up to Commissioner Deitch not to communicate to the other commissioners after he hears what he hears here today. You're in a public meeting, you're allowed to discuss your conversations with commissioners from other boards. Those commissioners can't discuss it between themselves outside of a public meeting.
Oh, do that. Oh.
Okay. So in my conversation with Commissioner Truex, he was very supportive of Phase One. He didn't understand why, he knew that it had been dropped, he didn't understand. When I told him that it was completely paid for by other sources, he did not understand that, so I asked Howard for the information on specifically, I couldn't remember, Tom Jackson's told us, you know, who was going to pay, but I didn't write it down, so I asked if I could have that information, so I could relay to him who was going to provide the funding for the Phase One. And he was very supportive of it conceptually, and I don't know that if that's, you know, unanimous, but he was. But yet, he also then questioned, he said, "But if we would need to know, what benefit do we derive Charlotte County from that?" And he said, "I think maybe it would be, there could be some." But he didn't, he felt that the real benefit was going to come more for us in DeSoto County than it was Charlotte County. And so, he did not feel that it was, this was a separate discussion from their issue they're having with the water authority over the rebuilding of the plant.
Well, it's definitely a separate issue, but I think in terms of benefits, I mean, we do serve Charlotte County residents.
Absolutely.
And so I think we need to emphasize to our commissioners, we are providing water to the entire South section, not the entire South, because there's portions that their RO plant is providing, but this whole section that we provide, thirty-eight thousand people that we're providing water to, and it needs to be quality water. And the interconnect is, again, a regionalization component-
Right.
-which would allow us then to share water even across the river to Charlotte County and DeSoto, if necessary.
It's definitely an ongoing conversation, so I think after we talk to, you know, the Swiftmud board members and the staff meets, and by the next meeting, we should have some more solid information of what direction this is going. We can definitely individually talk to our counterparts and answer questions that they have.
The point of information, from what I understand, DeSoto does not have an emergency interconnect, just so we're all aware of that.
But they get their water from-
Peace River Water Department. They do not have an emergency backup.
Okay, is that, let's move on. Next, we have city attorney.
Yes, sometime this afternoon, I'll be heading out to my annual Florida Bar City Attorney's, County Attorney Conference. And as I have been customarily doing since the economic downturn, even though it's in my contract to be reimbursed for that, I'm deferring that until some future time when hopefully it is much better, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And hopefully, we'll have some interesting things to discuss. One of the ones I saw on the agenda was my discussion about the organization that's going around seeking out municipalities and requesting public records and trying to hold them in violation of the public record law, so. We are not alone. In fact, I think we're just down the road, Fort Myers, the attorney there is gonna be, or Naples perhaps, is gonna be speaking about what they went through. They got worse off than we did, quite frankly, so. Just other types of hot issues that hopefully I'll be able to bring back some words of wisdom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, now to city clerk.
Under boards and committees, under vacancies, we still have an unexpired term for an alternate on the code enforcement board. We also have an unexpired term as an alternate on the historic preservation advisory board. We have now an unexpired term on the Pana Gorda Isles Canal Advisory Committee. We also have an unexpired term as an alternate on the building board. Under appointments, we have a four-year term on the Pana Gorda Housing Authority. Before we vote, was there any discussion on the information that was provided to you about the board?
Did everybody get the information from Ms. Heber regarding the seats on the housing authority? Okay.
Okay. Please vote for one. Voting forms are being distributed.
Patricia Oliva is the appointee.
Won't there be another seat coming open on that housing authority board here shortly?
Yes, that vacancy will be announced at the next-
At the next meeting? Okay.
Okay, and then we have, I have it under appointments, it's the fifth member on the police officers pension board. This is for council approval. I need a motion to approve the board's appointment for that fifth member.
For approval?
Second.
Do we have to motion and do we have to?
Vote?
Yes, yes, okay. We have a motion and a second to approve Ms., no, Mr. Robertson to fill Ms. Baker's seat. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Because it's an actual vote, not a nomination.
That's right.
Confirmation.
Right. And that's all.
Can I just note that Gussie Baker was on the police pension board for twenty-three years?
Wow.
Is this not outstanding service?
It truly is.
Volunteer service, twenty-three years.
Should we have a special recognition?
Yes, we're working on that, we're working on that, but that's-
Unbelievable.
That's amazing.
She's a very dedicated person.
Okay, and under policy and legislation, what I wanted to mention here today was, we did approve that grant with the regional planning council to move forward with art asset mapping, and the city is intricately involved with the visual arts center, the symphony, you know, we have galleries, we try to support the atelier in arts and that kind of thing. And we all were briefed by Don McCormick, and his mission as president of the Arts and Humanities Council is to put a cultural plan together, and he did come to TDC and ask for some funding, and the TDC did approve some funding of the plan. And Charlotte County Board of Commissioners have contributed to the plan as well, so I would like to see the city's name on the plan. I think it's important, because we do care about the arts, and what I would support is a thousand dollars, which I believe we do have in our business development fund, although it's probably the last of the fund. We do have a thousand dollars in the business development fund to put toward the cultural plan. So, I can't make a motion, or can I? Can I? No, cannot.
I would make a motion to approve that.
To approve the thousand dollars? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the $1,000 business development fund for the cultural plan with the Arts and Humanities Council. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have anything else under policy and legislation, so we will go to council member comments, and we'll start with Carolyn.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to thank everyone who had sent letters to the governor with regards to our RO plant. This is a critical project for us, and it is wonderful that our legislators have been able to secure, in the appropriations, $900,000 for the plant, which helped offset costs to our residents and our ratepayers. So I just wanted to thank everyone. The other thing I'd like to do is to update you on some of the MPO activities. I know I sent out a memo on it, but there was one additional item. But again, for our listeners and those who remain here, let you know that in addition to my talking with Chris Smith, Director of Transportation, with regards to our Harborwalk project, we did find out that there's no news on the light at E Klein Road. They said with changes in staffing, which have happened again. We'll await additional information, however, what was presented is, at least at this time, there's no need for a light at E Klein Road. So, but supposedly, they will look at that again in terms of getting the updated information on the most recent study. They talked about, and there was a recommendation from the Bicycle Advisory Committee, that more sweeping was necessary on our two bridges for our bicycles. They've come across glass and other things which puncture their tires, and they're losing tires. I asked about additional funding, because I understand that Punta Gorda has the contract to maintain those bridges, but of course, they're not swept as often because of the budget. Obviously, FDOT said, well, they have a low maintenance budget themselves, and he just didn't think that there'd be any additional money from FDOT. I suggested to our county commissioners, and Commissioner Deutsch was there, and I didn't get any feedback. I couldn't understand that the county commission would be willing to, you know, kick in some bucks to keep our bridges clean. So I'm, I'm still waiting to hear from him.
Have citizen comments and-
Maybe for citizens' comments. Our, our recommendation for the 215, 16 priorities for the transportation regional incentive program, the TRIP program, were adopted and will be forwarded to FDOT. And again, this is again, three, five years out, at least, for those, funding for those. Our recommendation regarding revising the sidewalks in South County to the MERTs, again, was adopted and included in the transportation programs. Again, this is in long-term funding. Obviously, we talked about the two Alligator Creek bridges for the current MERTs was moved up in priority for the joint Sarasota-Manatee and the Charlotte County-Punta Gorda joint meeting. This is still a long way off. It comes, again, as I mentioned earlier, after Sarasota has theirs, if there's funding in that program. But I thought it was impressive that the recommendation came from Commissioner Constance, Chair of the MPO. So I, I was pleased that he has also been hearing, obviously, from our residents in South County. The other item I did not include last night was that the MPO did endorse the draft Charlotte County 10-year transit development plan. And this is a plan for Charlotte rides. Interestingly, this plan provides for increased ridership through a combination of fixed route and flexible route transit, using the current infrastructure in Charlotte County of the buses and dialer rides. And it will serve riders from Northport, Englewood, Port Charlotte, and Punta Gorda. So for the same amount of money or cost that they're currently using for their bus routes and their dialer rides, they will be able to put in this transit. Unfortunately, the wait time will probably, or the interval time will probably be two hours. So at least with the current funds that they have, and then, of course, this has to go to the county commission for their approval. If it is approved, again, well, they have to approve some plan for their transit plan, but in terms of whether they will move forward on the fixed route, flexible route transit is, you know, to be determined. And once they do that, then an implementation plan and funding plan will have to be put together. And that's my report from MPO.
Thank you. Karen, can you turn that air up just a little bit? Thank you. Tom?
I'm freezing.
Yes, I'd like to acknowledge council member Freeland for her efforts in securing the grant funding from the House and Senate. I just think it was a remarkable and very tenacious effort, and perhaps we should put you back on, on it, in contact with Mr. Baruff. You've done such a good job. So secondly, if any of you are interested in watching me stuff Commissioner Deutsch into my Mazdamiada for lunch, you're welcome to come out and watch this.
You want to show up, it's his turn to vouch.
No, thank, thank you. A couple of things. One, last weekend, I attended the Advanced EMO, Institute for Elected Municipal Officials, and, in Orlando this time, and it was rainy outside, but it was great inside, and it was an interesting class. And as always, I walk away from there just feeling so blessed to live in Punta Gorda, and listening to the other elected officials talk about their form of government. A lot of them, there were quite a few in the class who are, have a commissioned form of government, so each of them are responsible for a particular department within the city. So somebody's responsible for public works, someone. And you talk about stove pipes and people not working together, and it's fiefdoms, and awful. And so, and we are always held up, so far this class, as, you know, our mileage rate is low, and as we are, we cost less, actually have a lower mileage rate than in the county, so it's less expensive to live in the city than the county, and it would just held, this time it was held up as, that's a model that you want to go for. So that was great. I had a resident, another item, a resident approached me in an email not too long ago about an incident where they were traveling east on Olympia, and at the, where the Linear Park crosses Olympia, a pedestrian walked right out in front of them as they were in their vehicle, and they had to slam on the brake. And so we had dialogue about, there's a stop sign there, and so they went and looked at it and felt that because of the brick pavement, it tends to give some, a feel of like there's a crosswalk here, pedestrian crosswalk, even though there's a stop sign. So then they, they said, came back last week, actually, and said that there was, they were behind a car traveling eastbound again, and this time, a bicyclist just came right out off the Linear Park, didn't stop, and the car in front of them had to slam on the brakes to avoid hitting the cyclist. So wondering if there's something we can do to make it more apparent that oncoming traffic isn't going to be stopping, or whatever. So I took a look at it, and what I'd, I'd like to get your feedback on, is I think we have a sign, a small sign underneath the stop sign, Shreve, that says, "Oncoming traffic does not stop." Thinking perhaps a small version of that, maybe it might be appropriate on the Linear Park, so that just try to give it additional notification that the vehicles coming here are not going to stop for you.
Personally, I think a stop sign says that.
Well, I agree with you, but you know, a stop sign was at Shreve as well.
Well, maybe we could ask Public Safety if they've heard more than two complaints before we go putting up more signs. That's how I feel about it.
People are, you know, what I see is that people are either just in their own zone, and they just, they don't even look. I mean, they're, they're looking down, they don't look either way as they cross that street.
And the cyclists that are riding the pass, they're, they're bold. I mean, I've had the same thing happen at Virginia and Shreve. While I'm, you know, stopped at the stop sign, I'm looking both ways for traffic. I take my left-hand turn, and here comes the bicycle, but, you know, I, I, I wouldn't put up more signs unless we have recommendations from Public Safety.
Ask them.
Well, ask them.
Yeah, ask them.
Ask them.
Carolyn?
Before you're, before you're done, I just have one show-and-tell item for all of you. Talk about impact of water. The, actually, this is a plunger, you know, the plunger that you pull up and down on your sinks?
Uh huh.
You know, ours was not working well, so Tom took it apart to find out, and it, the pipe has actually eaten away from our water. So, show and tell, I'm going to bring to Swiftmore.
Can you, can you, can you mail that to Mr. Baruff?
Bring it next time.
Okay, now we're into citizens' comments. Come to the podium, state your name. You have three minutes. On any topic at this point.
Well, good afternoon. My name is David Cowan. This is my wife, Hannah. We're residents here in Punta Gorda Isles. And we were actually informed that there would be a discussion regarding a possible revision on the canal ordinance for construction and boating. Unfortunately, there was a citation we received for our boats with, in the canal, and we felt we were in compliance, and apparently, there's a, some confusion in the ordinance, and we've been through multiple meetings with clients and requesting some additional review on what the ordinance was, and I actually was informed that we were going to review that today, and that's why we had come for, for that discussion.
No, it was not on the agenda today. Matter of fact, this discussion was in front of the PGI Canal Board. PGI Canal Maintenance Board. Now, I don't know where it ended up.
For the record, Terry, have zoning official? Yes, I did have the discussion with Punta Gorda Isles Canal Advisory Board, and I'm also scheduled to be on the Burt Store Isles Canal Advisory Board to discuss the possibility of including an option for a variance in waterways. And you had asked me to put that on the 21st council agenda.
After the canal boards.
After I get the input from the other board.
May 21st. After the canal boards, which is the, which is your peers.
Certainly.
They hear it first, and then whatever recommendations they make come to city council.
Certainly. Okay, we just received a phone call saying it would be discussed today, and for us to be here for any comments.
I apologize if you were given, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Can you clarify what the issue is? I don't understand.
In some of the canals, they're, the way the ordinance is written, it requires a 50-foot navigable channel in the center of the waterway, and there are probably several instances where a vessel may be a little wider than it, than the code would allow.
So like a catamaran or something like that?
Mm-hmm.
So we ask the canal boards to look at it. And say, no, they're the, they're the advisory.
Okay.
Our code does not provide currently for any relief mechanism for violation of that required setback.
So that would have to come from the canal advisory committees, then?
As to whether or not you, as the city council, wants to amend the ordinance to put some sort of relief in there.
Okay. So when does their citation run through the code enforcement cycle?
Since we are looking at this issue, it's just on hold, because we don't want to pursue it. If, if the advisory boards, you know, find that they would like to see an amendment, then there's no reason to pursue this.
Okay, so their citation is on hold for the moment until there's further discussion?
Yes.
Yes. Well, I wanted to make sure that was what we were doing.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We're not taking them to code yet.
Just one more thing I forgot. I left you with information that I picked up from the class that I went to on Enterprise Florida, at, down at the RSW, the airport in Fort Myers. And what I, the takeaway on this is, if we have anything where we feel like we need Enterprise Florida involved, call Tom Patton's office, because they're the go-to, and they'll follow through on anything that we need.
Thank you. You're going to try to push us past 1:00, aren't you, Nancy?
No, I'm not.
Any other citizens' comments, so we are adjourned. 12:55. I said three and a half. I wasn't even, this morning, I said-